She, well, she actually, she told me, just because it's hard for her to run the meeting from Zoom. You mind doing that, Dan?
No. Okay, we'll call it announcements. It's actually not six thirty, it's seven oh one. Called meeting order. President is myself, Dan McGinnis, Karen Spence. And on Zoom is Christine Altman, also President is Nate, but Norrie Cyrus. And Ken Ricka, I'm sorry.
Deborah Walrush.
Deborah Walrush, in public. We get minutes for approval, the regular minutes of May twenty eighth. Okay, we got a second. Hello, Christine.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
New business, there is none. Old business, there's the Torrington Fair Plaza easement discussion. So. Reason for us?
Well.
Okay, George. So President, how is George?
Um, why don't I give a.
Well, I see.
You sit here because.
No, I get to sit right here. No, please, please.
Yeah.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Is there supposed to be a picture on the screen, by the way, Nate?
Uh, there is. Let's see. I don't know why. It was working before. Uh. Give me a second.
Okay.
Y'all. Yes, I can. Um. Christine, for now, let's see. I don't know what's going on, Christine.
Okay, I can deal.
I'm gonna share the plans, though, so that. Can add, so give me a quick moment to do that.
Okay.
Sorry, this is like an opposite sort of screen situation. All right.
Uh, I can see that, so that's good.
Okay. All right. So I guess last we left this, um, this was a proposal from the folks who own the Torrington Fair Plaza, the Walmart Plaza, Ken Ricka and George Logan are representing their client, who's looking to do some tree clearing and associated ecological restoration within the conservation easement area and adjacent to some of these wetlands. And, uh, yeah, so we had, we had a kind of robust conversation. The group had agreed, Christine, that they, they thought it made sense for you to be here as the chair to kind of, um, you know, help make the final decision as far as whether or not this, you know, this was consistent with the terms of the easement and could be allowed or whether, you know, be partially allowed or just fully denied as an activity. So that's, that's where we're at. And Ken Rick is here to help answer any additional questions or maybe add more.
Going in.
Yes.
Yes.
So exposure for the bank.
The bank is going to be. The structure where Nate's pointer is with the straight line crosshatching.
Yes.
That is a representation of the west side of the bank.
And that's gonna be, so there's McDonald's.
Across, it's going to be across the driveway.
It's gonna be on the other side of the driveway going.
Yes, and as part of that application, we're actually realigning the driveway to not have that funky intersection where you take, you have to go in, stop, take a left-hand turn, and you have five or six different directions of people all coming together all at once. We're going to eliminate that as part of this plan. That has nothing to do with the conservation.
Right. It's already been approved and, yeah.
So Christine, what you're, what you're looking at is there is a heavily crosshatched area. Yes.
Okay, that's what you want with the bank?
The bank is right here.
No, the bank is a player.
This, this is all wooded and kind of open right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
The heavily shaded crosshatch area is the area that we're looking to remove large pine trees and a lot of invasive species, replace them with low-growing native vegetation and do a monitoring regimen to try to keep up with the invasive so that they don't take over again. There's, the conservation easement line is a straight line that runs parallel to the top of the screen, and there's only one pine tree, and it's, I want to call it a red pine. I'm not exactly sure what it is. It looks like a red pine.
Yeah.
But it's the only tree that's outside of the easement area, and they could technically take that out. Whether they do or not is besides. Uh, so there's, there's about twelve pine trees in there. And which, they're, they're strictly on the embankment between the highway and a lower area, which is currently kind of used as a four-bay water treatment place. The state of Connecticut drains the highway down into there. Uh, and there's an old farm road to the right of that with a culvert that goes through it, and that culvert's elevated, so that culvert acts as a control device for water, allowing water to settle at the bottom of the embankment. If you walk into there, you'll fight your way through the invasives where the hatched area is, and when you get to the bottom, it's shaded enough, and there's enough water that stays in there that there really are no invasives in the flat portion of there. It's a pretty pristine area. And so in our conversation last month, a lot of the commissioners indicated that they felt that we shouldn't be taking trees down anyway. And there was discussion on partial and maybe taking three or four. George Logan and I had a very long discussion on that after, after that meeting. And we came up with the, with the realization that it's really an all-or-nothing deal here. The bulk of the really bad bittersweet infestation is at the western end or the bottom of the screen, and it encompasses probably heavily a good fifty percent of the trees there. Uh, as you move farther to the east and up the screen, there's still bittersweet, multi-floral rose. There's a few other invasive trees that George had mentioned, poison ivy, you name it, it's in there. And that was where we were discussing leaving some. But George and I came to the conclusion, and I, and I actually live on an old farm field that's surrounded by fields that have gone fallow. I deal with invasives every day. I have bittersweet like you wouldn't believe, I've got multi-florals. If you name it, I've got it. And what I've learned over the last seventeen years of living there is, is that you can't remove a small portion of invasives and make the problem go away there. They are so rampant that they'll just take over. So doing a partial on this, I don't believe is a good option. I think it's a waste of time, effort, and money to do that because the invasives will come right back. So having said that, there, there are invasives slightly to the west as well, beyond the area where we're proposing. There's not as many large trees, so the, the bittersweet's not growing as tall, but it's there. But with a maintenance regimen, we may be better to control them by controlling a larger area than by doing a partial. So I understand the commission's concern about taking trees down the conservation area, and if you choose not to, you choose not to. But if we were going to do this project, I would highly recommend doing as much of it as we can because then there'll be a monitoring and restoration and, and maintenance regimen in that area to try to keep the invasives at bay. I'm not guaranteeing they'll disappear, but at least somebody will be watching them and keeping track of them. And that's, that's really my pitch. You can go either way with it.
Okay. So from my perspective, um, I, I read the minutes and I read, um, in the conservation easement. An area of that size that's full of invasives and things like bittersweet and multi-flora rose can really seed a large surrounding area. So, you know, it, it kind of makes maintenance of, um, uh, the area surrounding it quite difficult. Uh, I think the downside, I mean, I think it's great to remove it and put natives in. Like, if it's gonna be a restoration project, I think that's a good thing. I mean, Sessions Wood, Woods did that. They removed all of their, um, they removed all of their invasives, and they are quite diligent at making sure that they don't come back. The problem arises, you know, as far as I'm concerned, in that it's always the disturbed areas that invasives come back to. So, you know, in a removal project, you're kind of creating that disturbed area. So, uh, can you tell me what the monitor, I mean, like, everything sounded good until you're like, well, there's no guarantee that there won't be any in there. So what is the monitoring gonna be? And the maintenance going to be, that limits.
George has done a very expensive note on implementation and seeding. I'm not, and I honestly, I haven't, I haven't studied it as well as he has. And unfortunately, he could not be here. He's on vacation with his family. We could develop a monitoring plan. Um, I would say, I mean, it, it obviously has to be monitored on a yearly basis.
Yeah.
The invasives don't sleep.
Right.
So somebody would have to be checking this at least once a year and then making some sort of decision on whether, on what needs to be done to control it. And that needs to go on for eternity at, at this point because there are other invasives in the area, and they will seed. Now, uh, our plan is to not remove any stumps and disturb the least amount of soil as possible here.
Okay.
But if you're doing, you know, hand removal of bittersweet, you're, you're gonna rip up soil because of the root network. And, you know, to get as much of it as you can, you do disturb, disturb soil. So, yeah, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's an experiment because we know it's been done, but it's, it's not always the easiest thing to come up with a perfect solution.
Yeah.
What my clients would like to try.
So I, I have a.
That would be the owners of the plaza.
And this house. And how, how would we know that's gonna be a viable contract?
Well, you could put a stipulation on this that the owners submit documents on a yearly basis from, from a certified wetland scientist and biologist of what they found and what they did.
But what's the title they, they don't?
I was gonna say, can we bond it?
I, that's.
I don't know, I don't know the legality of that, but I guess if there was an agreement drawn up individually, but.
But then you'd have, what, what, how would you enforce it?
Well, we would withhold the bond.
It's captured the bond.
We would have, we, we could, we could ask for like, uh, you know, fifty thousand dollar cash bond, whatever. I mean, I don't know what the, what the price of this kind of restoration over that amount of time is, and we could hold the bond. That, it, it becomes a lot of work, but I mean, that's just, I don't, I don't know if that's possible, but that's one way that, because I also was feeling like, you know, it would probably fall to our department to enforce and, um.
Christine, I wanted to mention, last time we talked about, so the reason that they want to take down the pine trees is because they want to open up the view.
Right.
Of the new building.
Correct.
And then when Nate read the information in the easement, the intention was to have a buffer area. And it, it seems as though these large pine trees are, have created this buffer. And, and that was my concern, that if you take them down, you're not gonna have your buffer anymore, which was the intent of, you know, one of the, want to be.
Right, and it does exist now.
Yeah.
I can't tell you, however, that it's not going to last all that long because of the bittersweet, but that's a natural thing. And then so be it if nature takes its course, but the bittersweet is gonna start taking those pine trees down. All it's gonna take is a heavy snowstorm with leaf cover still on the trees or a heavy windstorm, and you're gonna see those start, things start to crumble. I have them in my own, own yard.
I, I keep thinking about, like, when you drive down into, like, the Essex area, and you're along the highway there, and it's a mass of huge dead trees that are covered in, you know, live bittersweet, and it, you know, it, it looks awful. So, you know, I, I, I would kind of agree about getting rid of the bittersweet. And what, what condition are the pine trees in now?
Um, not a botanist, hard to say. They're alive for sure, and they have green growth, but they are getting covered.
So, um, plaza is basically being maintained right now, since people who maintain the plaza.
Yes, they have, they have landscapers in, in a company that will come and do that.
We would.
And they will always maintain that because they need to keep.
So if I go to Walmart and take a look, I would get an idea of what we're kind of landscaping people were looking at or how they intend on maintaining it.
Oh. I, I think, I think that I am tending to, towards being less conservative than the rest of the committee members about this, but I have a, you know, particular hatred of bittersweet. And, uh, so Christine, my bias coming in to it, and, you know, I have seen restoration projects work, but they have to be done well or else, or else it's all right back, if not worse.
Well, and that was something, what little I know about invasives, yeah, you take them out of one area, but then, you know, you're, they're just gonna take over, take over again. So, yeah.
So you take them down, and I don't know how long, what will happen after the, the bittersweet. How long will it take the bittersweet to kill off the trees? And what will happen there later after? I don't, no, I'm unable. My concern is, you know, you, you do this, and maybe the first year or two, and then somebody else. You know, and you have to enforce that, you know, maintenance, you have to do it, and that's just the pain.
Somebody kind of has to be the watchdog.
Watchdog and remember that to do it, then, you know, and it just.
I mean, is there some way that we can, if, if we did not allow it, I'm not saying, you know, yes or no, but i- if we left the trees, that we could remove the bittersweet if it's such an issue? I don't know.
I don't know. Why don't we walk?
Well, it's private, it's private property.
But we have an easement.
Right, but that doesn't necessarily grant rights to, 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 well, you can access it at a reasonable time, but not to actually do work on it, for public access.
Yes, I'm sorry.
My question was, once, if, once the invasives are, are removed, then what kind of buffer, what kind of vegetation will be in their place?
You have a plant that's lower, lower, lower.
Uh, there's a mix of shrubs and small trees. They're a pretty, pretty decent mix of shrubs and small trees.
And those hopefully would be set up so that.
Ten, twelve foot, fifteen foot high.
So that the invasives can be removed between them if they start coming back.
To a point, everything that's here is going to grow wide, and we don't want to leave. If we're gonna leave a buffer, we want, we'd rather crowd out the light to help control the bittersweet and everything else. But once you get to the fringe and you get sunlight coming in from the sides, that's, that's, that's really the critical place. Anything that's, anything that doesn't get light through the canopy doesn't really support bittersweet. And that's why it's not back, back deeper in here, is because there's a good enough canopy within the bulk of the conservation area to keep it shaded enough to keep that down. Same thing where I live. When I walk into my woods, the first fifteen to forty feet is bittersweet. When you get a hundred feet in, it's not there.
Why, why is the, the pine tree is shading out the bittersweet?
I mean, I think it's a very, it's a very disturbed and invaded area across the entire property.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been disturbed in thirty years.
No, it's.
But, but there's a lot of seed bang all around it. The birds like to perch on the edge, and they drop all their droppings, and there's enough light that I guess, I, I have not taken a good enough look. In my, in my mind, I see, like, them draped with it or anything. It's probably growing up. I don't know how suppressed it is by the, by the shade that's there, right? Because isn't that aspect, isn't this nor, uh, north?
North, but it still gets a ton of light on this side.
Yeah, just because this is so open.
Right.
Three-dimensional, uh, field walk, I don't know, is that the, something?
Should do that. That's my feeling. I would take a look at the bittersweet. We'd take a look at the evergreen there. Yeah, I'll, I'll. I think it would be a good move. Christine, what do you think?
Yeah, I would, personally, I would like to, I'll be back on the first or the second of July, and I'd like to, uh, take a look at the area.
Yeah, we set up a dating?
Yeah, sure. I mean, do you want to do that right now, or, um?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could.
Now, it's a bit darker.
Yeah, that's one every.
Thanks, Dan.
Everybody's a kind of.
Um, do you want me to send something around, or do you guys, can you think we can agree on a date now?
I can't.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
Or the fourth.
No, individually, it's, there's a sidewalk right in front of it.
You know, better for it.
And you could have an open discussion. It's not like wetlands, like, you know.
What's a good date for you, Nate? You're the one.
Uh, I am the one.
You're the one.
I mean, I could do the second or, or the fifth, which is Friday morning, or I'm very free the week of the eighth.
I could do the week of the eighth more easily.
Week of the eighth.
Um, the only conflict I have is Tuesday morning. Everything else, I'm free.
Everyone said Wednesday morning, we, whatever the hell day, seven. Ben, yes, Ben.
Wednesday, the tenth. Um, yep, seven, ten at, what time, Christine?
I can, I can do, I can do seven, ten. I'm free that morning.
How early is nine work for people?
Yeah, or, it'd be cool.
Nine.
At nine AM.
Say that again, Wednesday, the.
At, at nine AM.
Do you want to have, I, I don't even know if it makes sense for just, you, you guys, do you want to come or have George?
I would like to be there.
Okay, so.
If George is available, I'm sure that would be a good thing because he, he's better versed at what's going back in there than I am.
Right. Okay, so that, that sounds good. So you know.
George would probably say this is what he, how he envisions it, and maybe we can get that.
Yeah.
So we'll meet up at the, uh.
Bye. Yeah.
Find, find, find where the bank is supposed to go.
So maybe McDonald's parking lot?
Yes, yeah, for me to McDonald's parking lot, there's a sidewalk that walks out to two oh two, and then you can use the crosswalk to get here.
Is the encampment still in there, or, I guess we can go, we're gonna go around it anyway.
It's, no, it's pretty thick. I was there a couple of weeks ago and.
Well, I mean, we can access from the sidewalk instead of having to go through the bank, bank pad, that's why. Because I know, there was, there was an encampment in the bank pad a while ago when I was there.
There, there was. I don't believe that's there now. But still, it's better, better to come down the sidewalk. If you go into the bank pad, it's almost impossible to get out of it. It's that thick.
Yeah.
Really? This is perfect, Dan.
Thanks, thanks for listening. We'll see you on the tenth. Good to see you, Christine.
Yeah, nice to see you too, Ken.
I know you're not seeing much of anything right now, Christine.
Yeah, he knows what I mean.
Good night, folks.
Good night, Dan.
Okay, HVA crossing assessment?
So I, I know that Deborah's time sensitivity has taken off, so if you know, she's here to talk about the Red Mountain Forest Trail grant.
For that?
Yeah. Of course. Um, so I was talking to Deborah when she came in earlier. She's representing the Torrington Trails Network. They were a huge partner on this project and were able to secure the property originally to do this work years ago and helped us really get this through city council. When we were looking to write the grant for this, there was some opposition, and that was a really huge help. You know, we're, we're partnering with them on the grant. Their role directly written into the grant is to help with outreach and, you know, you know, putting together neighborhood meetings and looking at the first drafts of the plan. And I know that they've been contacting me periodically, what's the status, what's the status? And, you know, she's here because there's some concern that potentially the funding could be lost or that it's just gonna get pushed out indefinitely. I, you know, I started explaining, and I, and I talked to Steve Iveyne, I ran into Steve Iveyne, and, you know, I had this conversation with him as well. But right now, the, the, I'm sorry to say this again, but the, the original plan that was created is really was considered practically unusable by our current, um, consultant SLR. Um, so they, they had to go out there, reshoot the, all the grades, remap all the wetlands. And I can attest, you know, if, like, looking at it, I, I was confused as to where I was, whether it was the same property or not, because it was done from a desktop, and it seemed like they had never even been to the side or really, or, yeah, looked at the light art to see if there's a cut in there. So, so basically, they had to start from square one, and it's just taken a lot longer. We received the grant, um, last year, and the hope in our timetable was to have, you know, construction started by around now, and we're still only at about fifty, sixty percent completion of the plan. We also don't have the, since it's a draft plan, we don't have a full easement approval from Ocean State Job Lot, which is required for us to meet up at McDermott Street. We had a lot of conversations with Ocean State, and they were really not comfortable giving us any kind of confirmation without actually seeing like a, a more robust draft of what it would actually look like through their property. I'm hopeful. They didn't seem like, they seemed like they were just, you know, they're a bigger company that's based in a different state, and their legal team, you know, it's easier for them to just say no or, you know. Um, but they do want to be a partner, and, you know, they want to have a good presence in the community. So I, I'm hopeful. I think that they will ultimately approve it. They have some concerns behind their property with drainage that I think this project would help tackle, and that would certainly, I think, help sell it to them. But we just need more. So at this point, I'm, I'm in communication with our engineer, our city engineer. He's the one who is, you know, communicating with the consultant, because SLR is a retained engineering design consultant. And, uh, you know, I'm getting regular invoices, submitting those invoices to Deep. I've already told Deep, based on conversations with SLR, our budget for this project was something like seven hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand, and SLR is saying there's no way it's gonna cover the scope of the project, even in its most basic form. The design, the money for the design came in, you know, a hundred and fifty percent more than what we had budgeted for, just for the design. So I let Deep know that. I said, hey, we're gonna have to come back and talk about where we're gonna find more funding for this and how we're gonna do it. And they were very open to us doing another round, you know, having, um, kind of a pathway to, for the next round of trails money to, to help complete it. Because I think that a lot of folks are going through this right now, where, you know, with inflation and just the lack of staff round.
Is it trail to be paved?
No, this isn't even, this is for just stone dust. Yeah, I mean, the paving is the preferred route, but it just, it, it wasn't gonna come out cost-wise. And, you know, and they could always have all the basin and stuff. They could always upgrade the surface later. This doesn't include any kind of amenities at the end. It was supposed to be kind of a destination at the bridge and by Newfield Road. This is like really basic, a barrier to keep people from going on to the bridge, which is not safety rated.
And SLR said what they think, uh, construction estimate.
They haven't, they don't want to get.
Be part of their design, um, task is to put together an estimate.
It is, yeah. We wanted them to put us, it was a menu of, of kind of like, basic, like, plus, and, you know, just like, kind of different iterations of it, from the most basic funding to something a little bit more if we're gonna go for a future round. And that's, so that's part of the scope of this. So, again, I'm just kind of waiting for the, for it to come to a final draft phase in which, at which point we would have to immediately initiate with Ocean State Job Lot, and then that's when we would engage with Torrington Trails to try to, because we'd want to bring in the public. But I don't want to plan for public input meetings when we don't really know. Time, timeframe, and.
When does SLR, like, have the whole thing?
I'm, I'm assuming by the middle, the end of the summer.
Is there any way we can put some pressure on them? I mean, it, it's.
Well, I've worked with a lot of different, SLR is one of them, um, engineering firms. And if you're not pushing them.
That's right.
The other people who are pushing them.
Don't go ahead.
Squeaky wheel and all that, yeah. So I don't know whose job that is, but.
So I'm not the direct, that's the challenge. I'm not the direct interface with SLR. Paul Kunzen's our city engineer is. So I'm not the direct, that's the challenge. I'm not the direct interface with SLR. Paul Kunzen's our city engineer is. So I've been pushing him, but sometimes the push might not come through. They're working on multiple projects for the city. So I don't know what Paul's, um, priority order is, you know, there's like street projects and like, you know, the things that are potentially different priorities.
Cause I would think deep would be more favorable to give more money if you had a complete design.
Definitely would.
Yeah.
Right.
No doubt about it.
Well, and that was part of our approval now because we had assumed, we, we weren't trying to be disingenuous with deep, but we said, we have this plan already. We know it's a little off. But we, we're, we're gonna work with a consultant to fix it and get, but it, it was worse than we had even anticipated. And, and that was the issue. So, I mean, the good news is that I think that deep's probably, you know, you know, the trails program is a good program to work with and that, that they seemed like this is okay. Don't freak out about not hitting your, your timeline on this kind of stuff. We'll just work with you. There's always yearly funding rounds. We just probably have to tap into next spring's funding round to help us get to final.
There's no limit on the grants. When, who's the grant from?
The, the, it is from deep? Yeah. It's to the record, Red Trails grants.
Yeah, when you. When you're talking about, um, next spring, um, again, I'm saying, can anything be done before next spring? If you get the draft, uh, the final draft from the S, SLR, um, then by the end of the summer, then I know, then you go to Ocean State and find out whether they're okay, that they haven't signed on the dotted line. Is there any way to use the money that's already been allocated from the grant that you had from deep and the lesser amount of money to get anything started whatsoever?
So we, we started on, um, I mean, so obviously we've been billing for all of the consultant work at this point. I would think that if we have a final plan set and maybe in anticipation of that, the clearing, right? For the site clearing, it's pretty, the, the trail route now is kind of a goat path, a herd path that goes through there. So the, the trail itself, but it's gonna have to be widened. The nice thing is it's all locusts and invasive, that whole route is, that's, you know, where the original area of disturbance was. So, you know, that kind of clearing, you know, maybe that could start through a different contractor, um, just to get it, just to get it done. But again, all that has to go through wetlands. It's kind of like, if we start work on that, then we're gonna have to go to wetlands twice. Because if there's gonna be clearing in the upland adjacent to all those wetlands, obviously it's ideal to have the full plan approved and then that way we can go forward without having to go back to commissions again and again.
I mean, ideally you have one contractor.
Yeah, and they can do the subs, you know, for whatever the clearing is.
Thinking of a suggestion, it sounds like you've just mentioned who's, one dealing with SLR. I'm wondering if, if you, as a concerned, you know, party reaches out to that person and then he, oh, is it Paul? Puts pressure on SLR that, I'm just thinking that would be a good path to move things along.
Well, so, so you're, you're saying that I, like, if I lean on Paul the engineer or if she does, oh.
I can, I can, I know him.
Yeah.
Reach out to him. I don't know that I'm much.
Right.
Well, it's just, you know, you're Torrington Trails, right? You're representing Torrington Trails and you can certainly just say, you know, I was at the commission meeting. I got an update. I, it, it sounds like SLR is working on this and I just want to, um, you know, say that I.
Ask you to push them.
In a nice way, you know, I, if, if you could do that, I'd appreciate it, that kind of thing, you know, and then follow up in another couple of months and say, hey, I'm checking in again, you know.
Couple of months, we're talking already.
Well, when, you know, I mean, I'd like to see something happen in early fall, you know. Yeah, that would be a really good.
A good time to do it too.
I mean, just in my line of business, the more people that helps, you know.
Let's say in the engineering.
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, you know, I have other jobs with SLR for my particular work and, um, getting their behind on a lot of things.
Yeah. I'm not surprised. No, I think, I agree. I think that's a really good idea and I don't think you have to be particularly, the more people who bring it up, just the higher it rises in our, in our desk piles.
And the more you hear about it, you know, oh yeah, you know, let me check.
That's why I was here tonight.
Yeah.
Because I figured.
But we don't, you know, work with SLR, so it's.
Right, I'm giving them regular updates, which of course I, I, I wish there was more progress. I actually have a progress report that's due this week. And so I definitely, I always use progress reports as an opportunity to be like, where are they? What's it, you know, where, where are we expecting this is gonna be and how long is it gonna take? Yeah.
Of the plans completed. That's not.
Well, and a lot of.
As soon as they submitted a preliminary design.
That's where we're at right now. Yeah.
Have you seen that and that it is?
Yeah, yeah. But it's, it's not yet, but it's, it's more about rooting, routing, right? And so once that preliminary design is done, it's my understanding that it's gonna go a lot quicker. That's what I'm told. Because it'll be more detail oriented once everything is in. Cause I guess they have to go back and forth. They've lumped this in because the, the complicated part about this project is that it's all one piece from behind Ocean State, which is not a really complicated part, but then it meets up with McDermott from the right away. And then it goes down McDermott to D, to, um, North Elm, which is D, which is state. And so they're like, they're working with the state with that crossing there. There's gonna be a signalized crossing. So there's that piece and that has to go through their review. And then it's the city, you know, review through McDermott. So it's not to say that it's like insurmountable, but it's more complicated than if it was just behind Ocean State Job Lot. I would hope it wouldn't take that long.
You'd think that part would have been done already, you know, in the original plan.
Well, they didn't, they didn't, they weren't reaching out to, yeah.
Well, I mean, the original people who, who made this design.
Yeah, I don't, and I wasn't here at that time. So I don't really know other than the previous staff being very disappointed in the product and me saying.
Do you know when that happened? When was that? What was the year?
The, uh, that was probably 20, 2021.
2021 is when the original plan came out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Somewhere around 2020, 2021, somewhere around there.
So at that point, nobody's going out and doing anything because we're still COVID.
Right.
Right. So that's probably why it was a job from.
Yeah, maybe they, although it's outside, like, but.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Right.
I guess that that's true.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I do agree. I think reaching out directly to Paul isn't a bad idea and just that you came to this meeting and, you know, you, you're curious about how long it'll take and, you know, just what, what you're, what his impression on it is, just, you know.
Do you expect the next, the next set of plans to be available?
Well, the preliminary design hasn't even been presented yet from what I hear.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Oh.
Well, no, 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 there's a, it's, it's like, uh, you know.
It was just a desktop one.
Concept.
Yes, yeah. It's not, it's not like a, like a planning concept, but it has to do with like just the route over the terrain. Whatever that is in engineering.
Whatever they had planned, you said, was totally unusable, whatever they had originally planned with that first group.
Right.
That had looked.
Right. And they, and they're, yeah, and their plan was really weird and they, they had the route going in a very strange way that didn't really make any sense and just was overly complicated.
So right now, you're waiting for the preliminary. When I go back to Torrington Trails, I would say you're waiting for the preliminary.
I'm waiting for a draft, for a, for a draft, yeah.
Draft of the preliminary design. And then from that you can go to Ocean State?
Yeah.
Draft of the, so if that, if I've talked to Paul, then that's what we need as soon as possible.
Yeah, and just have.
The draft of the preliminary design.
Asking, asking questions. Yeah. See, I don't know what that, cause it's, it's the kind of thing where it's like when we get.
Preliminary design is sort of a draft that you take and.
Cause it's preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, you said draft, so I wrote it down.
No, I was thinking, I was thinking we're looking, so we have a, we, I, I don't have it with me, but it's, it's like a, it's like a route that, you know, it doesn't have, it has all the grades on it, has where the wetlands are on it, but it's very rough and it doesn't show detail.
And how long has that been around?
That just came out in the past month or so.
And, and does that seem like a viable route where they've done it later?
Yeah, that, better than, better than the prior one for sure. Just more reasonable.
Walk that route, then no.
Yeah.
Was almost coming in water, right?
Right. We moved it up onto the side of the, I mean, to go through the cut would have been.
Yeah.
Really cost prohibitive and may have, would have likely been denied by in the wetlands.
You, you've been updating, you've been talking about, you know.
Right. And I was wondering if the wetlands are, like you were talking about, the, where the railroad track has sunk down and.
That's all wetland. Yeah, yeah. And it's really cool back there. I mean, it's really that, that area, especially where you can see the smokestack from Fort Worthville and all, they converge there and there's a little dam, like, that's, that's a cool spot there, but, um.
And then the bridge is a whole other thing, the bridge.
That's not even a part of.
We're not even discussing that. That's the bridge at the very end of the trail. I wonder if anybody, the condominium folks were very enthusiastic about it. They were saying you could even use our parking lot.
You mean to drop off? We could actually drop into their parking lot and put there.
Well, they were thinking, they were thinking that, um, people could park there if they were going. That's what I heard. I, I didn't speak to them myself, but that's what the Torrington Trails people.
Yeah, I think we're, we're planning, we're, we're not planning that, but I guess, I mean, they could.
All right. They were trying to be friendly.
Yeah.
And welcoming because they would really like it. I think it would, I think it would be a real plus with their residents because you have a walking trail and they can walk their dogs or whatever, you know, that kind of thing. So but mainly our concern is that here we've been telling people it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. We had a letdown because we couldn't get the property on the other side of the field road. Still hanging out there. I don't know if there's ever gonna be a change there, but, but then we said, but we know that the city's ready to go with the Red Mountain Trail and that's what we've been telling people.
Right. It's just, it's, and, and a lot of it truly, I think, I mean, it's, it's SLR being slow. But it's also the fact that we're gonna have to go back for more money. That it's just we.
Yeah, but at least do the.
Right, right. But that'll push it out even more. That's, that's, that's the thing.
I'm sorry, I do have to leave. My husband is probably right now getting my granddaughter out of the shower. Something he's not quite accustomed to doing. So, anyway, thank you so much and please take my chair. Very nice to meet all of you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
HVA crossing assessment.
So this is something that we had deferred, um, Christine, I, I didn't have the location of the Follow the Forest linkages. I did follow up with HVA and got a map of those. So I'm not sure how, I guess I'll leave it up to the group to decide how we wanna go about. Right.
Are you putting the map up?
I am.
Okay.
And how many locations did you, let, let think that there were?
Uh. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10? No, not even. Yeah, so about, about 10. These, these polygons here.
That's what I, I thought it was 10 or 11.
Right. So you can see how they identified it remotely. They found these big patches and then the, these areas were identified as being, um, sparsely or, uh, what's the, um, not dense enough to, to, so that there could be motion, movement between animals in these locations. So yeah, so I guess just coming up with some kind of plan as far as who goes out. Like you said, like they were saying, yeah, like in pairs or, or, or as a group and which ones we do and, and all that.
I figured out the subject, it is a subject, but earth, you get that channel, earth. They had one that was really great on passing and they're actually building, building, um, overpasses so that animals can, and I mean massive, you know, like in Washington and.
They're actually grass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, massive animal migration. That was pretty cool. And even, even little ones, uh, for, for like salamanders and stuff.
Yes.
That's more of here, you know.
Yeah, that's what we got.
If we would, we would do something like, we could, I mean, eventually something like that could happen or like a, where a river is crossing, you know, doing something where your animal wildlife could pass along the river. Let's say if it's a culvert, replacing that with like a bottomless culvert or a, um, a bridge span so that there could be terrestrial passage for animals next to the river.
Is this anything you'd be involved in doing as well or?
I don't have to be. I can, um, but yeah, you guys could do this on, on weekends, whenever I, I, I'd be happy to do it, but I don't have.
Do, do you have a preference?
I'm sorry, what was that, Christine?
You have a preference? Like, do you want to be involved or do you want us to, to just do it?
Well, I know, um, I know Karen has a, like, you know, she's working and so it's, it's been challenging for her to get to do the open space date. So I mean, maybe if there's some, if you want to do it on a weekend or Friday afternoon or something that makes sense, uh, that works with some people and I'd be happy to do it during the week if that works for other people.
Okay. I have time both, you know, I'm pretty flexible, um, particularly through the month of July and August. So could do a little of both. Just do, we want to do only one linkage in, at a time or could we tackle more than one?
I went to that, um, training, but I had to leave early. Any guests as to how long one would?
I think it depends, but probably a half an hour.
Half an hour. So maybe two or two if they're close by.
Yeah, I think.
As a start and see how it goes.
And we have that chart to fill in. I mean.
Yeah, so I have that, um.
Check one.
Yeah, I have that here. Um. Yeah, you can see this is about, I mean, it's three pages, but a lot of these are, you know, kind of illustrative, you know, like this road and what do you see on each side of the road and, you know, I think you could still do it pretty quickly. And some of it could be done at home or af, you know, right, like the, because of the linkage, I guess you could do it all on site. Still wouldn't be that bad, but. Yeah, she didn't, she said she would follow up with a paper map of it. This is an interactive uh, map. Did I share this with the group or not? I don't remember. Okay, I can share that. This is just like a web mapper that they created.
So Christine, you said you're relatively available.
Weekends and weekdays through July and August. So I don't know if we want to set up a couple of dates.
Well, if we set up one or two, we could all get an idea of what, what we're supposed to be looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Karen, we set it up at five, could you do it?
Five o'clock, it might be good for me to.
Yeah, but.
During the week?
I, right now.
We do a weekend?
Mondays and Tuesdays, so not a Monday or Tuesday.
I can do Thursday at five. Because it's.
Like this Thursday?
Thursday at five?
Hmm. Not tomorrow, but.
Next Thursday evening, right?
I mean, even, even 4:30, you know, I could.
Next Thursday is July 4th.
Fourth is, that's right, that's out.
It's gonna be tough.
It's gonna be tough.
We can do the 11th.
Yeah, 11th would be good.
We already have the one thing on.
Oh, we have the.
Oh, yeah.
Right, same. What about the following, what about the 18th?
I think I'm okay on that. I'm good. So seven, 18 at what time?
Oh, so hold on. Hold on a second. Thursday at five? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you're there, Nate, I don't have to be there. I teach a class at 5:30 on Thursdays.
Well, I could do, I could do this one and then we could have the next meeting and see how it goes and then, and then schedule it from there. Just start with one.
Yeah, let's see.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
Seven, 18 at what time?
Five.
Five, PM?
Five, okay. Five's good for me.
Yeah.
Okay, Nate, you send us the location that we're gonna go to.
Yeah, I was wondering, should we, so at the training we did this one right here where Sunny Brook meets Pogna. I mean, do we go back there and like use that to calibrate what we're doing? I mean, do we go back there and like use that to calibrate what we're doing? Should we just do do it from memory? Cause I feel like I could kinda do it from memory.
I think, yeah, I think you could do it from memory. I think just move forward.
We could do these two here. This is the one that connects. Well, this is the Pogna State Forest, and this is actually, I believe it's an easement owned by Heritage through here. Off of uh Sawmill Hill.
Yeah.
That.
Where you come down the hill?
Yeah, where this crazy sort of steep area is. Uh, where would we, we could probably all park at the at the deep property at Sawmill Hill Road. Um, I don't know if you're all familiar with that. When you're at the intersection of Newfield and Sawmill Hill, let's say you take a right here and you cross over the river. This is an agricultural field here. It's owned by Deep and it's kind of a wide shoulder, right? Like, I feel like you can pull off there pretty easily.
Do you wanna set it up at at that?
Yeah, we can start there and I'll pick another location. We can kinda go in caravan. Folks can jump in the car. I'm just confirming before I. Yeah, so it looks like, well, this, like, see, there's like a little pull off here. It's a sparsely used road. I have some enforcement stuff with. You may not wanna see it, our vehicle, but that's okay. Okay, cool. Sounds good. I'll I'll circulate that to everyone.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, food forest planning?
So I did that draft Bannon Street letter. Did I know Karen said that that seemed okay after I I incorporated people's comments? If everyone's okay with that, I don't know, Dan, did you wanna, we had, we were gonna do like a Spanish language version and.
It was we we have a final?
Yeah, I mean, I can finalize it, but I'll, do you want me to send it to you after this? Okay.
My son was going to Columbia.
Okay. Well, that makes sense then. Okay.
Great. All right, I'll do that.
It is a nice city.
Um, we talked about Red Mountain Trail grant, cause yeah, now we're on staff update. Oh, yeah, other than food forest planning, um, how are the people have the plans? How are they doing?
Berries. One of them, the leaves are starting to get a little funky, so I gave it more water because.
Yeah.
Told me, don't water them too much. And then, and then I think I went too far that way, so I I'm. They're still alive.
Yeah.
Hopefully the one that's a little off, you know.
Kirk's up.
Yeah, I had the six blueberries.
Are they burlapped or are they in?
They're hot.
They're hot, okay.
Uh, what what about yours, Christine? How do they look?
Well, when I left. On the eleventh, they were, they were fine. You know, basically, the instructions were just to soak them once a week and if it was particularly hot to do it twice.
Do you, do you need me to go by?
I have somebody taking care of them. I just sent them a text asking how things work, but, you know. I'll get, I'll get an answer. I'm sure that that they're fine.
Well, it was.
Killed one of my aloe plants, I will tell you that, but that's a little bit different. It started to look sad because it got overwatered, so we watered it more and drowned it, but.
Yeah, was it, so Jeremy has some too. Um, yeah, I don't know who, I didn't, I don't know where all the chips fell at the end of that whole thing, but uh. Yeah, she delivered them, so um, yeah. But anyway, yeah, so I'll just, I'll.
September.
Yeah, that's the the idea was in October, September, October. Hope, yeah, I think we had talked about instead of doing the fall cleanup, which is usually very, very sparsely attended, trying to put our energy into. Getting attendance out for this and making this an event. But uh, but yeah, other than that, so I'll get the letter and once, once we get the two versions of the letter. If everyone's okay, I can go ahead and do a mailing of everyone in that. I was gonna do Bannon Street, Red, that part of Red Mountain Ave. Whatever that cross street is, not Jarden, but the other Mallard. So I'll just do all the ones in that kind of immediate vicinity there. Yeah, we'll see if we get any response back.
All right, I got a text back saying the apples, apple trees are fine.
Urban Forest Management.
So we did not receive the grant. So I was very disappointed about that. The good news is that they were really open to having a debrief. So I got to speak with the urban forestry coordinator. About why the application wasn't granted. And initially, my thought was that they do have a an urban forest planning grant round that's yearly that has a fifty percent match. And I figured that they probably just didn't wanna fund stuff that they were already funding through a different grant. But they said, no, 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 that's not the issue. We had dedicated a a lot, a lot of money to public outreach, but they had wanted more advanced work with underrepresented communities. Prior to the submittal of the application. So they said what they would have liked to see was like. Meetings with like the Ecuadorian community in in anticipation of the grant meeting or. Some evidence of outreach or, you know, i- identification of a potential underserved communities that, you know. Contacts or something more robust than just, you know, our existing equity process that we had gone through to identify some of these groups. And allocation of money to get a a consultant to specialize in doing it. So they just wanted more on that. They they had four million to release. They only released one million. So they said they're gonna do another round in the fall or winter. And they encouraged us to reach the met if you're able to get something. So I'm gonna try to put something together. A little bit more robust. I doubt I'm gonna have the time to do some kind of public outreach type of thing like this.
Or something like this. And I obviously public outreach is always important, but. Do you think those underserved groups for some reason are gonna have an interest in in this? I don't know. I'm trying to make the connection why that's such an important piece.
Well, cause the 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 grant was uh was like the urban forest equity grant. And so it's a pass through from the federal government and that money has to be tied to equity. So they really, I think they have to really explicitly demonstrate why, why it's serving those specific populations identified. In the federal government's tracts, they have like special, you know, they've done their own identification of census tracts. Of like areas that they consider priorities. Um, so basically, you know, it's like, well, maybe they're not interested. But then that doesn't really compelling story for to fund. So, yeah.
And that is the one for the federal government, cause I was, I was, I was looking into that. Now, that is also basically for shading streets. Have for for heat and. Did get some money then, but.
Well, no, it was really, it was very open as far as what you could apply for. There was like food forests, like the stuff we're doing here, though we really. Need any financial assistance on that. Um, there was like, you know, tree planting projects. You know, tree maintenance, uh, like the tree program, programs for tree planting programs, municipal tree planting programs. They had like a really wide breadth and I, when I first came to the direct or the uh, the program manager saying I wanted to do this. Planning um bit, she seemed kind of reticent, like it, like it didn't, she had to go back and see if. If they could fit it in somehow, because they wanted, the government wanted it, like, we do a tree planting project in this census district. You know, like, the money goes into census district with the plan, right? It's kind of diffused over areas that aren't priority. So they wanted extra sort of, you know, assurance that it was going to be targeting those folks. And so it wasn't just like, oh, yeah, we're like, you know, I don't know. Somewhere like Brentage, and we have one little area and we just do a plan for the entire municipality and they're covered under it too. But they're not actually getting any kind of special benefit for it. That's my.
Nate, can I, can I say? So when I was uh ordering and picking up the food at Soul. A waitress there asked if she could do outreach.
Oh, that'd be great.
Spanish speaking. And uh, she mentioned it again when I went in to eat. So I have her um, her information. And perhaps this is a project that she could tackle.
That'd be wonderful. Yeah, if you could give me her contact, I could at least set up a call or something or a meeting.
I would set up a meeting. Or maybe, yeah, I don't know exactly, but.
Would it be, would you want it to be something with just me to star or?
You could do it either way. I just, I um, I don't know. You know, I think that in terms of English, she's gonna be better off face to face.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Um, yeah, that's fine. Uh, yeah, if you give me that contact, I'll definitely follow up on that. The other, you know, the other bit to this is that we could just go in and apply for the regular round of funding in the fall. Since our public works director has indicated that they think that they might just pay the match. In which case we'd probably be assured to get it. Um, so I don't know. I mean, I can pursue that again and just see if they're interested. Public Works will fund it, in which case, not to say I don't want it to have a um, an equity component to it, but, you know. We could still build that in, but not necessarily have to. Yeah, I I'm I'm just concerned that I'm not gonna end up having the time to do this. It's gonna like fall to the, in the background and uh. Um, but I'm gonna try. We'll start with this conversation on this.
Okay.
Uh, open space inventory?
Uh, yeah, so uh, this we deferred from the last meeting too, just planning another, a lot of field visits. So I don't know, whenever you guys wanna do, um, one, this was gonna be for the Greenbrier subdivision open space, which is actually quite large. Christine, did you, or or Dan, did you end up going out? Do you know what I'm talking about there from when they built Greenbrier? That was kind of. In the back on the Litchfield line. Um, I think part of it was actually, I looked into it a little bit more, was from the Army Corps. It was an Army Corps wetlands enforcement issue with a prior developer there and it was like compensatory set aside for. That that probably came after, but. But Christine, I think you're.
Remember about Greenbriers, it's a really difficult, like, like its name, really difficult to get through.
Yeah, I noticed that. So it may be, it may be documenting how difficult it is. I mean, I could try to bring a machete. We do, we do have a. We don't have direct access to the main bulk of it, but we do have an access easement through the Greenbrier property.
Okay.
You also have to cross over the private property to get in there. Uh, yeah, it might be a machete tip of situation. I drove by it and it didn't look good.
So, yeah, I think it is, I think that that's pretty much what Greenbrier is known for. And if they had to give us land, that's gonna be the land they gave us. I I'm wondering if because we already have two appointments, two meetings in July, if we should defer our date to. August.
Yeah, or September.
It it in that kind of environment, if it is all brambles and tangling and stuff and it's like ninety degrees, you know, it may not be a very fun. So would you wanna do September?
Sure.
The next meeting, we can set a date to go.
Okay. That's good. I don't have this on the agenda, but I also, I did a kind of a a desktop exercise that I probably didn't have time to do, looking at our conservation easements. That the commission holds. Um, and we have a near map, which is a high resolution, sort of. Three times a year aerial photography. Um, so I did a kind of overlay of all of the easements on that. And looked at what kind of major encroachments might be that I, if you could see it from the air that big. And the one that really stuck out was on um. Killen Dale Boulevard. And there's like a person who expanded their lawn like, you know, basically like. Five thousand square feet of it into the easement. Um, so I was gonna go ahead and just send them a notice and start enforcement on it. If you're all okay with that, cause it is the, under the Conservation Commission, I was able to find it. I think they did it in like twenty twenties, wasn't even that long. Which makes it a little easier.
Yeah, longer wait, the longer you wait, the worse it's gonna get.
Right. I mean, it was a bad, here, I'll I'll show it to you. It is.
Is that the Pleasant View or something? It's called subdivision?
No, um, I know, there's so many in that area. I I get a little confused. Yeah, it is in that area. It is in that area. Okay. Can you see it, Christine?
Yep.
This records like all the measurements I do, people's properties, so. We just added easements. And parcels. Middle school, parent's house. Yeah, I already got it out.
Wow.
So. You can see that little triangle there. Let's see how long that. Looking, looking like it's been there. And like it's been there. Whoops. See all that grading? Very wellness. But uh, yeah, that's, that's the moment. And then prior to that. Woodlands, woodlands. Yeah, so, so anyway, so it would actually be a pretty big amount of restored area. So basically, I guess what I would, what I would say in this case would be to. I don't know, I I. I guess it's up to you guys. Do you want me to like show cause them? It it is big. These are not the offending landowners, unfortunately. So these folks.
Oh, that's sad.
Walked into this. It is, but look how close it is to their deck. You know, I don't think, I think that there may have been an older encroachment that we, you know. Like it may, see, it already, it was a little bit of an encroachment into it already. Right. Yeah, that's still, but see, it's probably was really rough back there still.
Yep.
So, so anyway, so I mean, so I can send them a letter.
Take possession.
Do you want me, so I I can send them a letter and basically tell them this and then have them just reach out to me and then I can get them on an agenda that makes sense? Or do you want me to?
Yeah, that that sounds fine. Do you, when did they take possession of the property?
Make me do work now.
Sorry.
So what kind of an outcome are we looking for? Or we want it to be restored?
That's kind of part of the question. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it can be anywhere from a restoration of what was there to. Putting boulders in and saying, don't touch this, like along the edge. Well, that's not, that's not their own property. It's just an easement. So, so I don't know, the boulders might be a little extreme, but it, but some kind of, maybe have a double fence or like, you know. I don't know. I think you. Yeah.
I mean, the 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 deal is, is that what's the point of having conservation land if people can just turn it into their yard?
Yeah, and I think, you know, based on my experience in doing easement stuff in the past, it's really kinda up to you how you wanna do it. I mean, I I think that maybe they'll get an attorney involved and that might change things, but, I mean, you got the easement. Anything that you do would probably be better than the strictest interpretation of the easement, which would make him like replace all the plants that were, you know, like.
Right.
No, I would start from the.
You you can do something, you know, you could decide what is reasonable to impose on them.
Would their title insurance take care of stuff like that?
That that is, I was thinking the same thing. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if they have title insurance.
That's true. But I mean, a lot of lawyers, when you buy a house, that's just something that they kind of include in there because it's that one time fee.
That was my, that was my thought. I was like, this is a great time to have title insurance, cause how could they not see the? That was like, that was my thought. I was like, this is a great time to have title insurance, cause how could they not see the easement on their, uh, during the title?
Exactly.
Right?
Yep.
But, you know, let's see. So they, so I, the work was done in, no, it is the same person. Nice.
Awesome. Okay.
Oh, that's great.
All right.
So that makes it a lot easier. Then you can be as mean as you want.
Yep.
Um, okay, great. So I'll just go ahead and send that notice and then we'll, and I'll kinda, maybe I'll let him have the next, you have the next meeting to think it over and I can come back to what with all, see how they're, how they're. Yeah, exactly. Okay, great.
Okay, uh, anything else? I said not, we got a motion to adjourn?
I have one question. The gas station across from fourth school.
Yeah.
And that load of dirt with the.
I don't know what the deal with.
What is going on? Is, is that tainted dirt? Is that the problem or?
I don't know. I know exactly what you're talking about. There we see it. I'm like, what's going on there? They did all that work on the, they like excavated the tanks. Yeah. But that would be, have to do with their building permits for doing all that stuff.
I was just curious.
There's no wetlands near there, so we wouldn't have wetlands. And I think it was considered a maintenance activity, so we didn't take any like zoning permits for it or any, or like a site plan review.
Yeah, but if it, if, if it's dirty dirt, it's, it's.
Could be a deep issue if it's.
Gonna be wrong up there. It could be a deep issue. And it's been sitting there for a long time. I was just.
No, I know exactly what you're talking about. I don't know.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I, yeah, yes, I think we're good.
Okay, let's go.
Thanks Christine.
Yep, thank you.